Right on time.
Now that everybody's here, I call the January tenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order at six P. M. Ms. Pinyard, will you please call roll? Here.
My bad. Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Samuel Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova. Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Matt Constantine.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving to citizens' input. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
Shucks. All right. Okay, and then we'll move into administrative matters. And we're going to make a deviation to our agenda and go first up with the new member intros.
Great, thank you Chair Heberline. So we have a little bit of a tradition here at the Planning Commission. As we have new members join our commission, we like to just provide a quick introduction, welcome them, and do kind of a round table where each of you has an opportunity to also say a few things about yourself, how long you've been in Wilsonville, how long you've been on the commission, and kind of what interests you in this position of service with the city. So I'm happy to welcome Sam Skoll, Yana Semenova, and Matt Constantine to the Planning Commission. Staff has actually had an opportunity to meet with them a couple of times now to provide them with a training overview and background on some of the items that will be coming in front of the commission this year. So we're excited to have all of you on board. I'd like to officially welcome you from the planning team. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chair and allow the chair and the commission to introduce themselves and welcome the committee members.
Great. Well, officially, welcome to the three new members. Great to have you here and excited to get all of your input and your different knowledge and experience and be able to shape this committee, commission in a slightly different direction than we had before because it's new people. So Ron Heberline, I have been in Wilsonville for twelve years. I work in management for aerospace company down at the airport, Columbia Helicopters. How long have I been on the Planning Commission? Five, six years, something like that? I don't know.
You're in your second term, I know that.
Yeah, I'm in my second term, so close enough. And yeah, just a little bit about me. I love flying and hiking and camping and stuff like that. So, Carr, you want to go next? Sure.
Andrew Carr, I have been in Wilsonville for twenty, twenty-one years. Welcome. Thank you for joining our commission here. Value your input. I think it will be an interesting time next couple of years. I think we've got a lot of things coming down the pipeline, so appreciate your input. I have been, what, DRB Budget Committee, Planning Commission, so I've been around volunteering for a little while. I have two kids in school. I have a freshman in high school and a seventh grader that are sports addicted, so that's my life outside of work and the commission. I do work for a software company, and that's what keeps me busy during the day. So, welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Willard.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Willard. I have been living in Wilsonville since two thousand fourteen, so almost ten years. And I've been on the commission for, I believe, it's been four years, and I'm now in my second term. I was on the DRB before that. I work for Intel, and I work on the construction side of Intel. I've been there for twenty-three years, all doing construction project management, design engineering management, scheduling, all those types of things all across the globe. And now I'm glad I'm hybrid, so I don't have to make that drive very often.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Nicole Hendricks. I joined the Planning Commission a year ago, so I'm entering my second year of service. And before that, I was on the Development Review Board. Been in Wilsonville for about eight years, and my day job is I work for the city of Tigard in their city manager's office as an analyst. So I get to work with mayor and council, and yeah, just I enjoy working for cities and surveying committees and commissions, I guess, too. So, and then outside of that, hobby-wise, been playing the flute since I was like six years old, so I'm in Twalton Valley Community Band right now. And yeah, I like to do that in my spare time, so nice to meet you.
All right, Commissioner Skoll, why don't you go up next?
Sam Skoll, lived in the rural area of Wilsonville since two thousand ten. Recently retired, retired in two thousand twenty-two, spent forty years in manufacturing, and I was working in Twalton, so now I'm kind of doing my own thing, and I'm doing, have a business now, doing insurance inspections for commercial businesses, and served on multiple, just like Andrew, sort of on multiple committees. One stint on DRB, two stints on Budget Committee, and this is my first day on Planning Commission. Looking forward to it.
Welcome. All right, Commissioner Semenova, did I get that right?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Great job. Yana Semenova, and this is my first time serving on such commission for the city. I've been in Wilsonville since two thousand nineteen, I believe. Yeah, it was before COVID, I know for sure. I also have kids in school in the Wilsonville School, so Lowry and Wilsonville High School. I have three boys. And my day job is I work right now in leadership at Portland General Electric. I've been with BGE for about twenty years in various roles, but right now in more utility operations. So as you can imagine, we're very much preparing for this weekend. But yes, something different. I immigrated from Ukraine in the early nineties as a child, but lived in Oregon ever since.
Fantastic. Welcome. Commissioner Constantine.
Well, I'm honored to be here. This is a great opportunity for me. I've lived in Wilsonville only for the last three years, and we moved from California. I retired from public health and just thought that life is short, and I wanted to do something different, and this is where we would always vacation, and we just loved Oregon, and that was our goal from day one. And I have three children. They're all grown and doing well. Two are in Portland and one is in Canada. But we convinced my in-laws and my mother to also move here, too, so we kind of come as a group. So, but anyways, I'm honored to be here, and thank you.
Great. Welcome. Okay, next.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Last term, we only had six. Can you explain, were we supposed to have seven the whole time?
Over the last year, we actually had seven commissioners. Commissioner Gallagher actually needed to step down partially through the year. So the kind of second half or the last quarter of two thousand twenty-three, we had a vacancy on the commission. But the commission has been historically a seven-member body.
Thanks for the reminder.
All right, next up on the agenda, Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair nomination.
I guess I'll take the lead on this. So the Planning Commission will elect a chair and vice chair subject to the following rules. We will begin with nominations for the position of Chair of Planning Commission. Any member of the commission can nominate someone for chair, and you can also nominate yourself. Nominations do not have to be seconded, and if you are nominated but do not want the position, you can decline the nomination. Once there are no additional nominations forthcoming, then the chair will close nominations. I will read the names of the nominees, and then we will have Paula go around and do a roll call vote where you will name the nominee that you want to vote for. So if one person receives a majority vote, that person will then be declared the new chair, and then they will ultimately take over for the remainder of the meeting once we get done with this. If we don't get a majority vote, then we will continue to do the voting until there is a majority vote. You don't drop off the lowest, you know, vote getter, but somebody can withdraw if they so choose. Once we complete the election of the chair, we do the exact same thing for the vice chair. And then once that's all over, then we will hand over to the new chair, assuming there's a new one. So with that, I will have Chair Heberline open up for nominations.
All right, I'll open it up for nominations and nominate Commissioner Carr.
Wait a second. I nominate Commissioner Heberline.
Rock, paper, scissors, I guess. Any other nominations?
Nope.
All right.
So you can declare it closed, and then, so your options are Commissioner Carr or Commissioner Heberline, and if Ms. Pinyard could do a roll call.
Jennifer Willard.
Oh, I just said which one?
Is that right?
Yeah. Ron Heberline.
Let's do this. Okay, Yana Semenova.
True.
Carr.
Andrew Carr. All right. Matt Constantine.
Andrew Carr also.
And Nicole Hendricks.
Andrew Carr.
Samuel Skoll.
Andrew Carr.
Ron Heberline.
Andrew Carr.
Mr. Carr.
I guess Andrew Carr.
It's confidence. Do you want me to do the roll?
So the result of the nominations and election is Commissioner Carr will be taking over as chair. So then we can go into vice chair nominations. No.
So open nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Willard.
Ron Heberline.
Any others? All right, we'll close the nominations, and Paula?
Matt Constantine.
Well, these are difficult. I don't even, I met you five minutes ago, so I'm just gonna struggle here at
He's really good.
recommending who. Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna look at Ron, I guess, because he's looking at me, so there you go.
Sam Skoll.
Ron.
Yana Semenova.
Ron.
And Nicole Hendricks.
If he's okay with it, Ron. Thank you.
Easy job.
Andrew Carr.
Ron.
Jennifer Willard.
Ron.
And Ron Heberline.
Commissioner Willard.
So Mr. Ron Heberline is our new vice chair for two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
All right, so on to agenda item number...
Two.
Two, yes. Consideration. So consideration of minutes. The date of the meeting, which was December thirteenth, two thousand three, being considered the minutes previously distributed, are there any corrections to these minutes?
And I will just note, because we are about to vote for the new members, it's okay that you did not attend. You can still vote, but if you don't feel comfortable voting, you can abstain when
Okay, thank you. Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Next agenda item is Frog Pond East and South Implementation Development Code. Not a public hearing, so ask staff to present. Mr. Pawley.
Thank you, Chair Carr.
Yep.
It is shorter to say than Chair Heberline.
You're welcome, Mr. Pawley.
Give me just a moment to bring up the presentation of a topic that may seem familiar. But really, the hope for tonight is that we're gonna really focus in on this variety standard, which is a key component. And from the last work session when we kind of covered a variety of topics, we, I think the commission all agree, this could be a topic where we could spend some more time and just kind of, because it is different and novel than what we've done elsewhere in the city. So it does take some time, and we've done a lot of time as staff getting our heads around it and working through it, and also I want to reiterate that we've also spent a substantial amount of time over the last year testing it. We've had consultants testing it, laying it out, making sure it works, testing it internally, and also we've had our development partners taking drafts of it and seeing how it works and giving us feedback on it. So this isn't, there has been a substantial effort that's gone into creating what we have today in order to implement what was in the Frog Pond East and South master plan. So make sure my screen. All right. So I wanted to start by reviewing kind of the basis of the standard. Why are we even having these standards? How it may relate to housing variety, and I mean, ultimately, we're looking for a housing variety that was a very strong tenet of the master plan. I do want to point out that it's not the first master plan we've had where we've wanted housing variety. Certainly, Vilbo, which we did over two decades ago. That master plan had kind of some similar themes, really wanting a variety where where there's a variety of unit types, a variety of price points throughout the neighborhood, a fairly close proximity to each other, so there's a rich, rich mix. However, you quickly note here that there's a lot more colors in Vilbo than there are in Frog Pond East and South. So there's reasons for that. Certainly, the, one of the big ones that I'll point out here is that for, and I've got into this a bit with Commissioners Constantine Semenova and Skoll, but those of you that have been on the commission for a while remember that our middle housing project and how it's kind of the regulations around housing have changed quite a bit, where one of the bases of that is anywhere you allow a detached home, you also have to allow middle housing. And so kind of that growth of that concept, I mean, on a basis, if you, you're allowed, where you allow housing, you allow any type of housing, is kind of the approach that we end up with in Frog Pond East and South. So where in Vilbo, we essentially went, you know, by portion or block or almost by lot in some places and say, hey, this is the type of housing we want in this location, the master plan. In Frog Pond East and South, the desire is a similar level of variety or even greater variety in some instances, but it's really more performance measures than being prescriptive of where on the map that goes. So that's one way of looking at it, is kind of mapping kind of urban form, but then creating performance measures of how we get to that level of variety and what geographies, like in Vilbo. So I hope that explanation's helpful of kind of why we're doing it this way, but also that this idea of variety and rich housing variety isn't something brand new. It's just the way we're approaching it is different for a number of reasons. So I mentioned the urban form. So the three urban forms that were mapped, urban form one. So the three urban forms that were mapped, urban form one is, and in each of these urban forms, it is about the built form, but naturally, when you create kind of standards around the encourage a certain built form, there's certain housing types that tend themselves to those built forms more than others. So for example, if you, if you only, not that we go to this extent, but if you limit the width of a building, then certain types that want to be wider will tend not to want to go there. And also, if, same thing with something like lot coverage, if you, something that wants to be denser in terms of lot coverage may not go in an urban form that has difference. So that said, urban form one is kind of the most intense or where you have the bulkiest, closest-together buildings. And so type of buildings that we'd anticipate seeing there typically, again, but any housing type are allowed in each of these, is apartments, large townhouse buildings, closely spaced detached homes. What we talked about is kind of the best example existing in our built form today is like the Vilbo Village Center, that kind of level of development. Urban form type two is more moderate setbacks, moderately sized buildings. So you'll have detached homes that are slightly smaller, slightly larger, or maybe a bit more together, a little more setback in some instances than urban form one. Townhouses, plexes, and maybe some smaller apartment buildings or, or apart, as we've talked about, apartment buildings that maybe, but have more articulation, so they look, so they have the appearance of smaller buildings. And the best example there is really some of the outlying areas, single-family areas of Vilbo, as well as the small lot or kind of Morgan Farm area, if you're familiar with it, of Frog Pond West. Where urban form three is more setbacks, this is where there may be a greater mix of detached homes, but also smaller townhouses and plex buildings, possibly some cottage clusters, we'd love to see that, also smaller looking or smaller apartment buildings. So in that case, more the other areas like on Willow Creek Drive and Frog Pond West would be an example of that urban form that was kind of envisioned. However, more housing variety within that urban form. So one key concept is, we really talked about earlier, one key component, I can still hear Commissioners Carr's words about this in my mind, about not segregating the uses and making sure that there's, that each area of the plan has a variety of housing types. So you're not, you know, you don't have all the multifamily on one side and all the detached homes on one side, which is kind of a model that's been followed in the past. You think of like Wilsonville Meadows and the surrounding apartments. That was actually planned as one master plan, but you ended up with, you know, all the apartments here and then all the single-family kind of across the road and a brick wall from the There was at some point discussion of even having variety at a block level. We ended up not recommending and aren't recommending that, that level of regulation just from some practical and kind of site planning and site layout reasons. But still, we want to create a geography of, regulate a geography that creates, approximates that and make sure that wherever you are in the master plan, you're in fairly close proximity to another housing type. And so that you have a mix of, a mix of housing types and likely then that would lead to a mix of people throughout the planning area. And part of how we do that is within those geographies, look at, we talked a lot about this in the master planning, is create a minimum. We, during the master plan process, we created an affordable, we did affordable housing analysis, really looking at, to the extent we can. I mean, there are definitely headwinds and challenges of creating truly affordable housing in a new growth area without, without bringing in, without buying land or doing other programs. So from that sense, we wanted to remove regulatory barriers, but also at the same time acknowledged that to truly get, you know, like 80 to 120% or less than 80% median family income housing, then there would need to be subsidies or other efforts there. However, we did look at, we do, we can create opportunities for more attainable housing for both different demographics that may, or that may be open to a smaller footprint, smaller, smaller home, but also at a more attainable price point. So with that in mind, we set up this idea of minimum target units. What type of units can support that? First of all is middle housing, which again, we went back to this middle housing project. There's requirements from the state that really, we want a good chunk of middle housing, that missing middle housing that's historically been missing for the most part for decades across our built landscape, making sure we have a good portion of that. So, and that's true. So we're aiming to have a good portion of that and have requirements to do so. The other thing we talked about is smaller units, to make sure that they're not all large units, because in, in the construction field, I mean, you can explain it like this, and I'm sure our development partners here can explain it better than I can, but essentially, you have certain components that are fixed cost, right? Once you have that land, you have the fixed cost, the most important parts of the house are like the kitchen and the bathrooms and those sorts of things, where the plumbing fixtures and the appliances, but then once to add a bonus room or another bedroom that's just essentially some, some electrical wiring and framing and then it doesn't cost, it doesn't cost much to add that extra square footage. So development, from a marketing perspective, will tend to add that extra square footage where they can to get a higher return essentially by once, so that ratio of those kind of those key expensive parts of the home to the overall, to our footage economically, you know, there's kind of an incentive to make it larger. So really encouraging smaller units and actually requiring a certain number, but also doing that at a relatively, not being overly aggressive with that. And I think that's something that you'll see, is like, you know, the recommendation now is about 5%. So that's not overly aggressive, but making sure there still are those options out there. Then, a lot of discussion about mobility-friendly units, which I want to also say here, we're not talking about full ADA universal design units, we're really getting into building code about, you know, layout of bathrooms and grab bars and counter heights, things like that. There is a conscious decision not get into kind of those building code interior parts of it, but really, this is about, the mobility-friendly units are about having, first of all, limited steps or, you know, no steps or just minor steps that you can easily build a ramp over for, for the access into the home, and then having the key components of living on a single floor, which include kitchen, full bath, and a place to sleep. And then there's two subcategories of that that we've introduced and will, you'll see in our tables. The first one is partial, which essentially means that maybe you do have all those facilities on one floor, but then you may have an upstairs that's, you know, the extra bedrooms and things that may not be accessible, but someone could still live in the home and have access to all the facilities, but just may not be able to go upstairs readily. The other one is full, which means it's essentially a single-level unit where everything, you can get to all portions of the house without use of stairs. And then getting back to making sure that there's not, there's a rich variety throughout. One other strategy that came out in the master plan is in the implementation strategies and of the master plan, is to set a maximum of any one type of unit in any area, so you don't get that concentration of units in one area. So that's an important thing, and you'll see that come out in the code as well. And I'll pause there then before I get into actual code and happy to answer any questions or take any comments about kind of the background and kind of why we are doing these variety standards that we'll be talking about further tonight.
Commissioner Schell.
So I have a question about your first slide, and you talked about it a little bit, and I think this has been conversation had in other meetings. And I'm not really sure how to answer that or ask the question, but is there a certain process that you go through in terms of blending the different types of construction into each one of these sites? And if I think I understand, what you're gonna, what you could have is you could have a single-family home, you could have a two- or three-story condo and a set of apartments in one area. Am I hearing that right?
Correct.
And so what, do, what controls, how, you know, how, what goes next to what? I mean, do you know, you have a group of single-family homes here and then can you have a four- or five-story apartment right next door to it?
So there's two components of that. So great question. One component is that it's about the design, so essentially the envelope of the building. So there are regulations that while you're allowed that whole kind of range of housing types within an area, in terms of the built form or the envelope, they can't be that divergent within the same urban form. So if you have an apartment in, let's say, urban form three, it's going to be small, it's going to be more the scale of a large detached home or have that look and feel more than, you know, so you're not going to have that great of a juxtaposition.
There won't be extremes from what?
There wouldn't be extremes. So that's where the urban form, the mapping of the urban form comes in, is to prevent those extremes right next to each other. And then, but then by nature and just kind of from practical purposes, there's also, as you, as you site plan, it's, you know, a developer's not going to, and we want to recommend, I don't know any developers that really would, it doesn't necessarily prohibit it, but you're not going to put a single-family home in the middle of an apartment parking lot, right? So there's some practical standpoint and just some efficiencies, as you lay out a block, you're gonna, that's going to lead to lot depths and stuff that are going to lend to certain product types. So that, that, just from that practical kind of site planning perspective, limits how fine of a mix you actually get.
Okay, thank you.
So does that, does that help Commissioner Skoll?
Yeah, points me in the right direction.
Okay.
And Mr. Polly, do you mind talking just for a minute about building height and in terms of what the building heights are in the area or what's been drafted and discussed so far?
Yeah, so the other component is the building height is, does, and we've talked about this quite a bit through across, that's one differentiating part of each urban form. Like urban form one, you're allowed, we're still refining the exact height, but the idea is allow essentially up to four stories, though it'll probably be predominantly three-story, but there may be a four-story apartment complex. Urban form two, you're looking at primarily two, but you're gonna allow three because townhouses tend to want to be three oftentimes. So that'd be similar to like the outer areas of Vilbo where you have the, you know, the four or five plex townhouses mixed in with detached homes. That same idea. Urban form three is more gonna be encouraged to be one or two-story. So that height, again, through the different urban forms is one control to kind of differentiate the different urban forms and make sure you don't have an abrupt or awkward juxtaposition. And the other component is one thing we really talked about, because inevitably, those urban forms come together, right? There's some boundary line where those come together. So one component you'll see in the code, we won't really talk about it tonight, is along streets, those boundaries tend to be along streets. And where that is, we actually have the same setbacks along that street. So there's kind of, to help blend as you move from one urban form to the other. So having, so there's actually the built form that has a component, but then there's the perspective from the street. So if you set it back more, it looks smaller, right? So I'll leave it at that for now, unless there's further inquiries on that topic. No other questions? All right. Great. So let's get right into then the current draft of standards. And I will give a caveat, I don't think it was as clear in this version of the staff report. These numbers are still preliminary, right? These aren't, I mean, we've done the math, I'll explain where the math came from, but these are still subject to refinement, but it's the same notions, we'll, we'll carry the same ideas through, but we may adjust the numbers here and there for practical purposes as we refine prior to adoption. So when you see these numbers, they're not final. So I'm gonna start by talking a lot about what is currently number table six B. And this has been on purpose kind of where we've consolidated a lot of the requirements, so you don't have to go through a bunch of different tables. There's a lot of, so a developer or the reviewing staff can go, or a future DRB member can future, can easily go to one spot and really see what the, what the rules are, and it's pretty clear, right? There's, I mean, you're allowed that many numbers in that particular sub-district. So let me walk through then what is here. First of all, you'll see, and I'll talk about this more in the next slide, you'll see sub-districts, which are those geographies that was divided into for the purpose of encouraging variety within an area, but also is broken down by tax lot. And I'll come back to this. We had a Frog Pond West application on Monday night, and we, and we want to put precise numbers by tax lot, so there's a lot of clarity, because on Monday night, still, there was, because Frog Pond West kind of has a formula, and you kind of have to calculate what percentage of a certain area you are in order to kind of figure out how many units you're allowed. And sometimes that doesn't really align well with the minimum lot size and the allowed lot size, and it's been very confusing for staff, very confusing at times for DRB as well, understandably. So something that we wanted to do with this is, while you could write a formula, there's just enough variables in that formula and potential kind of competing standards that it's, we found it better in talking to consultants that have worked on a lot of residential codes, to actually do the math and just put the numbers in a table to make it more functional as you're doing review. So you'll have those geographies or sub-districts or tax lots, the geographies that you're regulating in that first column. Next, for ease of reference and just makes sense to put it together, is the total number of units that is the minimum. Something to note, unlike other areas, there's not a range here. This is the minimum. So, I mean, naturally, there is a range because, you know, just physically and with the urban, urban form requirements and setbacks, you can only put so many units from a site planning perspective. So, but this is the minimum. That next column would, is the minimum number of the first target unit type, which is middle housing. So this is townhouses, cottage clusters, duplexes, triplexes. The next one is the minimum number of small units. Again, you see here that it's, it's something that's being encouraged, but it's not a huge, it's a fairly small number. And then there's the minimum number of mobility-ready units, and with that slash, that's how we're presenting 12. For example, that first line, 12 is the total number, which could be partial or full mobility-ready. And then the four is a third of that, which is the number that are required to be full mobility-ready. And we've kind of gone back and forth, had the best Now, we've kind of gone back and forth, how to best present this. So far, this is, I think is the cleanest way to kind of show that there's two requirements there, but they also, the requirements overlap. I will also mention about the overlapping requirements. Something that needs to be clear on the record is that one unit can count for multiple categories of the, of the target. So if you have, for example, a single-level cottage cluster, that's by definition like 900 square feet, that would, that would count as, as, as middle housing, that would count as a small unit, and it also would be a mobility-ready unit. So it'd hit all three, so it could be counted as, as all of those, which has some benefit because it's another way of, of incentivizing those units to kind of hit all those, because we are interested in seeing those, so we want to incentivize those at a reasonable level that doesn't, again, want to make sure that it's grounded in reality and that it doesn't throw other things off kilter too much. So that is Table 6B. I won't go into what all the footnotes are, they're not really substantial for purposes of our conversations tonight.
May I ask a question now before you?
Yeah, let's ask questions on this table before, I think that's, would be smart if we can, Chair Carr, if we can ask questions on this, because this is kind of a foundation of a lot, what, a lot else that we'll talk about tonight.
Yes. Commissioner Willis?
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, when you have a unit that checks multiple boxes in the minimum numbers specified, the builder can claim credit in both of those columns?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then my other feedback on the table is, in some cases, you use the phrasing "mobility-ready", and others you use "mobility-friendly", and so I think the city should just pick one.
Yeah, it, it, we did just pick one, except probably we need to do more editing, just...
What'd you pick?
I... Yes. I think we went with ready, mobility-ready, yes, that, that, I'm almost certain. Now you put me on the spot, and I can't remember without looking it up. But now you see why, why it is, while it still needs some editing there. So that, thank you for calling that out, and I will do a more careful combing through the documentation to make sure we're using the consistent naming.
Any other questions? All right.
So I wanted to point out the geography of review, because there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this, and this, this is significant in a couple of ways. First of all, the geography really helps on that, on that desire to have the fairly almost block-level, if not block-level, variety. If you have to have a small enough geography you're reviewing, so you don't get the segregation, right? The other, but also you want it to kind of align with what's happening anyway, you want a geography that either, that you don't want to essentially create a geography that, that isn't otherwise recognizable in a way. That didn't really come out the way I intended, so if it doesn't make sense, that's okay. So the idea is, the smaller of a Stage 1 master plan area, which is essentially the development area, for those not familiar with Stage 1, which is one or more tax lots that do not comprise an entire sub-district, as well, or an entire sub-district. So, because the other component that we had to do here, in Frog Pond East and South, you have a wide range of lot sizes, and our experience is typically, development happens either with a lot or a couple of lots that have been aggregated together. So in one instance, you have like 70-plus acres that will go across multiple sub-districts. So we had to write the code that addresses that, that wouldn't allow, you know, essentially the grouping, the over-grouping of, of the housing types within that large 70-acre area. At the same time, we have to have the code functional for, you know, a one- or a half-acre project, or a four- or five-acre project, because we'd expect to also see those. So we, that's why you'll see in the code, it's not one, just one thing, but it's one of the other, depending on what you, what you're doing with, so. And also, that's why in the table, we've broken it down by each tax lot, where the tax lot is less than a sub-district, so it's clear what proportion of that sub-district's requirements are within that tax lot. But that said, if you are in a scenario where, where you have, you know, 10 lots in the sub-district, and you're developing three of them, you can aggregate those, those, those three lots, and you don't have to make sure, okay, I have, I bought this half-acre lot and this five-acre lot, I have to make sure I meet the, the half-acre lot? You can meet that requirement, as long as it's in the same sub-district, you can meet that requirement across the entire area that's part of the development. So you, so you could mix, you can move that overall requirement across whatever land that you actually have aggregated, as long as it's within the sub-district. So I want to pause there, did, did I state that in a way that made sense? Okay. So a little behind, getting into the, I won't show you the spreadsheet, but I'll, thank goodness, but kind of a bit of the math behind Table 6B. Again, this is still, some of this will be adjusted a little bit, just if we're like, okay, this is gonna be, we know that there's a wetland or a road going through this site, we know it's going to be less than 75% net area, we know that from the offset, so we may adjust that number from the very beginning. But this is generally the math that we're using. So another part of this is, okay, what do you base the math on? Because we have, we know what the minimum is, but we also know that a developer is likely to build more than a minimum, as long as it works from a site planning perspective and their pro forma. And so we based the requirement on what I call, for lack of a better term, the middle-of-the-road scenario, where it's, which is essentially 125% of the minimum, which also aligns with kind of where a lot of, outside of utility planning, where the, a lot of assumptions were in the master planning, that it was about that roughly 1,400 to 1,500 total units at build-out, that kind of a lot of the thinking was around during the master planning. So that is the, the number that was chosen from just kind of alignment with the master plan, but also the fact is, it's still, in our testing, remains reasonably doable even at minimum build-out, that as we test kind of construction at minimum build-out, we're finding that it is working, most part. There's, there's some things that we're still working out, that may be some exceptions, and I think those will get resolved, but it's reasonably doable, it's at a level that, you know, isn't unreasonable just on the surface, as we look at minimum build-out. But also, it doesn't overly reduce the requirement at higher build-out, as if we had based it on the minimum. Now, you could do a formula where it's based on the actual units, that becomes very cumbersome, and we've shied away from that for a couple, it's very cumbersome, creates some uncertainty, but also the fact, you start getting into this, this weird math where you start disincentivizing certain units, because for example, if you add, if you decide to, you know, if in this area you were to, oh, I want to build an affordable apartment building, the fact that you're raising your number of units then makes you have to build more other units elsewhere on the project, and we didn't really want to kind of disincentivize certain development in that way. And so we found, that's another reason where we wanted to go to, it's defined, it's kind of a middle-of-the-road defined number, that will, that is functional regardless of the number of, of units that end up being built in a certain area, and it is clear what the goal, what, at the outset, the goal that the city's getting, what, what is the minimum number of these different target units that we're getting, that, that's not uncertain.
So I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
So we went with the middle-of-the-road kind of as the basis, so that we don't underdevelop the target?
Correct.
Okay. Because we didn't want to use the minimum, so we went to the middle of the road.
That we don't under, or overdevelop.
Okay. Yep.
That is, that is both, if you're, if you tend, because some sites will tend towards the minimum for a variety of reasons, and we don't want to have a kind of unreasonable or un, unfunctional, or kind of unfeasible amount required for that. But at the same time, we don't want it, have it too low for if you end up having more units. So I hope that rationale of why middle-of-the-road makes sense. So then we ended up, based on that, we're looking at, of that middle-of-the-road scenario, 20% is of the units are middle housing, 5% are that next category, the small units, which is defined as 1,500 square feet or less. I know earlier, early on last year, we had some discussion of what is that right threshold? Between that 1,500 is the current recommendation, just because it's something that, from a market, it tends to be built. So again, that's kind of the market feasibility, there will tend to be, I think in reality, what those will tend to be is cottages, where cottages do get built, ADUs, as well as, as flats, like in apartments or condos. We'll all tend to meet those. So it's something that, it's a number that, as we've continued to test and think about it, staff does, recommends, it's kind of, it's, there's no magic precise math about it, but it's something that kind of points towards the city goals, but also is kind of grounded in market realities. And then for, for, for the total minimum mobility-ready units, hopefully I was the least consistent in this PowerPoint, is 10%. But again, of that 10%, 2/3 of that 10% can be like just a ground-floor mobility-ready, then you can have another floor that's not, but a third does need to be kind of that single-floor unit. Again, those will tend to be either met by ADUs, cottages if they're built, as well as on ground-floor apartments or elevator-served apartments.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So for the, the target percentage for middle housing being 20%, how does that align with like the requirements from the state about like more middle housing, or like, is there a percentage that they give?
That's really what that's grounded.
It is, okay, okay, because I was like, how does that align?
Pick a number, no, that was, I mean, I can bring back the precise like rule of reference and some stuff, but that's kind of, in some of the performance options and like the rules, it's really about 20%. Did you have something to add?
Okay, so the 20% is kind of like, they're, in their guidance, is that like the minimum? Or is that just generally, it should be like 20%?
That's...
I guess I'm generalizing here right now, because I don't know, but...
So there is no statutory requirement.
Okay, okay.
So it's not like the state set, here's a minimum and a maximum, or a like range for a minimum. It's more about performance targets and what the, as a state, where we're seeing production targets headed, headed toward, and I think that target is really around 20%. They haven't kind of set that as a minimum threshold at this point in time, so it's not a direct requirement. This was more a response to where we see performance targets headed, but then also the comments from the Planning Commission and the City Council around wanting to make sure that there was a substantive amount of middle housing achieved in Frog Pond East and South.
Yeah, and that's the other, is, is kind of, there is some alignment with other policies, but as Director Batshill says, it is also, is like, that is a number that does make sense as we've thought about it, and that it's a substantial amount, but it's not an amount that seems like unreasonable, or like beyond what the market would rationally do.
So is that something the city, that threshold, is that something the city will use in future developments, or will be development-dependent?
That hasn't been discussed at this point.
I would, I guess, only add to that to say that upcoming work on the city's Housing Our Future work plan, which is a combination, as you know, of our housing needs, housing capacity analysis, partnered with our housing production strategy, that will really help to have some of these discussions around what the city has done, what our need and capacity is, and then the policy choices for how we provide housing for the need, and what our policy options are. So those discussions, I would guess, would be a part of future endeavors in terms of iterations of that production strategy, and could change over time based on what the housing need is in the future.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this math? Ronald, this is math, Chair, our Vice Chair Heverline, so...
I agree, it is math. I'm okay with it so far.
Okay. So here's more math. So our development partners did bring out, I mean, we've, I mean, we understand for most part where some of the main wetlands are, where the, where the main kind of framework streets are, where the existing streets are that are going to be widened, so we have a good idea. There is still some unknown about, you know, maybe where some stormwater facilities may be, or especially some larger stormwater facilities. There's also uncertainty that on smaller, on smaller, some of the smaller lots, street alignment may work where it ends up taking more of, of an individual lot than anticipated, just to make streets align correctly. So that said, we, we, we looked at it, the kind of in typical development, that, you know, an assumption was made, as we did the math, that 75% of the gross area, which is the entire land, if you, if you draw the line around it, is, is net, which is the actual area that's being built as homes or alleys or parking. So we did think, okay, if there's a scenario, and I think it was a valid point, if there's a scenario where unexpectedly it is less than 75%, then it may become unpractical to put the minimum and all the, all of the, especially on a smaller parcel, all of the target units on that. So, but on the other hand, sometimes it may not, it may, the math may work out fine anyway. So it really, we developed this formula to adjust the requirement if it's found that the net, the net area is actually less than 75%. But the developer doesn't have to use it, it's there. Essentially, there's two steps, which is fairly straightforward. First of all, you just take the reduction ratio, so you, whatever percent net area you have, you divided that, you divide that by the assumed net area of .75, and you get a number, and then you multiply that number, let's say it's .8, by all of the requirements in 6B, and then you round that up, and then that's your new requirement.
Commissioner Heverline, he's got a question.
Mr. Polly?
Yes.
For Frog Pond West so far, have we done any calculations to see whether or not our assumption here is, is valid? Are we trending towards net development area being 75% of gross?
So two parts of that, first of all, like right-of-way is fair, is a fairly kind of industry standard of 20%. That's kind of just rule of thumb that I've used my whole career. I don't think right-of-way's been doubled yet, but I mean, streets are generally about the same. The stormwater, we did actually look at the amount taken up by stormwater in Frog Pond West, and the ranges there, and that's where kind of the 5% is. So from that, so from the stormwater perspective, we did actually look at, at Frog Pond West, or what at that point had been developed, or that we had data on, to come up with kind of, 75% was a reasonable assumption.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the process? So what is the process that will go through if something does drop below that 75%? Is it just a calculation that staff will make with a developer, or is there, have to go through DRB for a variance, or what?
No, no variance. It's still a clear and objective criteria. So even though there's some formula there, it's still based in that table of 6B, which is clear and objective. It's fairly simple, you know, there's, there's only, you essentially have two variables, so it's very simple math. Really what we want to avoid is where you start doing math with multiple variables. It's just, it's just multiplying whatever percentage that is, like .8 times the standard and rounding it up. Because when you're looking at a minimum, you tend to round up because, to the next whole number. Because if you round down, then you're not meeting the minimum.
Commissioner Heverline.
Yes.
So one more, just from that conversation. What level is the calculation being done at? Subdistrict, tax law, where is that definition?
It's at whichever level you're actually calculating at. So wherever the requirement is, so that the lesser of the subdistrict or the stage-one area.
Okay, great, thanks.
As defined by the table.
By, as defined by the table, so...
Okay, question.
Yeah.
Is there any scenario where it is, the net area can be greater than 75%? Is there clear guidance on that?
Well, in that scenario, I mean, the standards are a minimum, so it wouldn't be hard to meet the minimum.
So, but it doesn't grow if your net area is...
It doesn't grow. It doesn't grow, yeah. So if you're, yeah, so that's where it's...
It's a true minimum.
Yeah, it's just if, it becomes, because if it's less, then it becomes less feasible. I mean, the concept is it becomes less feasible to meet those standards, and so you may need to adjust it. But if it's greater, if you have, if, you know, you're able to develop 85% of your lot as housing, then you're going to be able to easily meet the minimums.
Okay, thank you.
So, so before, we've talked about housing category, and I think one or two work sessions before, we kind of talked about why we're going away from actually having a table that creates this, kind of this buckets or housing category, to be more direct about talking about housing types. So there is a table, Table C, which really lists out the housing types, and there's a couple things I'd point out here that's significant in terms of how the regulations work. Because essentially, when we get into maximums, it's about the maximum amount of housing type. So for example, in middle housing, you have four different housing types. So you can actually have more than the maximum middle housing, as long as you have different types of middle housing in there, which helps encourage actually having not just townhouses. Because in every, particularly multifamily and middle housing, there's kind of, the industry, the development industry will generally, most developers will tend to have one preferred product type in that. So they may, you know, want to build all townhouses. But basing this, the maximum on type actually encourages potentially to bring in a stacked duplex or cluster housing that otherwise they may not consider doing. The other thing I'd point out here is all detached units, regardless, or, which are primarily, most of those would be detached single-family homes, regardless of size, there's no, they're all grouped together. So still, you're going to be limited to 60% of the land area in the geographic area of being detached single-family homes. Also, this table will just, for purposes of clarity, there is potential, if it's determined not needed, we may take it out, but just kind of a double check of clarity of what's, counts as middle housing and what can count as a small unit, in case there's any. And you note down here in cottage cluster and ADUs that it's yes, even, it doesn't note that if it's 1,500 square feet or less. That's because those by definition are always less than 1,500 square feet. Any questions here?
Commissioner Heverline.
Shocker. Is it consistent with the previous middle housing definitions that an ADU is not considered a middle housing unit?
So in the state definition, so that one's a little tricky. So technically, it's not considered middle housing, but essentially, every middle housing rule also references ADUs kind of as a separate kind of little subcategory. So...
And there's nothing inconsistent with this policy, because we allow ADUs on every single parcel. So we follow state law, which says ADUs have to be allowed. It doesn't say that they have to be listed as counting towards the middle housing unit, which in this particular type of planning area, master planning area.
So the only, at this point, the only encouragement to build an ADU is that it meets the small unit requirement if you build one?
Yeah, and it could be, especially if maybe you're in a primarily detached area, that would add another unit type in there that could help you get to that 60%.
Okay.
And just more generally, just to answer your question more fully, elsewhere in the code, generally, ADUs are not like defined, like the definition of middle housing doesn't include ADUs. They're defined separately in our code. However, I think where the part, or maybe your memory may be like, well, isn't it middle housing, is ADUs, you can use a middle housing land division to divide an ADU off from the primary unit. So sometimes those terminologies get a little overlap, but to be precise, like in the code, we don't consider it middle housing, though it meets a lot of the same purposes.
Yeah, it ticks all those boxes. Okay, thanks.
So on the variety as related to maximums, there's also, as we talk about variety, there's also a requirement of the number of types of units. Again, we want this to be, to function for a variety of lot types and lot sizes. So if you have a small lot or a small development, you only need one unit type. If you're between two and five acres, you only need two unit types. Again, this really gets back to being able to have a functional, kind of allowing that, not forcing site planning that makes, that leads to awkward, to an awkward built form. And then more than five acres, testing that should be enough to be able to get three different unit types in there. And then we've simplified down the maximum. So essentially, where you require two or three unit types, no more than 60% of the net development area can be used for a single unit type. So that ends up being a fairly straightforward calculation. Again, this one comes back, this maximum really helps ensure that you're not using all the land in one area for one unit type, that you are getting that variety throughout. So with that, I want to go through a few different scenarios. I can pause for any questions or comments there, but just wanted to bring this all together in a few examples. The first one, and these are, as I looked at these, I looked at actual different parcels that are out there in Frog Pond East and South. This one's a .4 acre. If a developer wanted to come in and just build this by itself, they'd only be required three units from a practical, you know, they don't require any target units in that. They, it can all be the same type of unit. Maybe it's three townhouses or three single-family homes. And so there's no maximum percent of one unit type. So there are these exceptions for the small lots, just for practical purposes. And then even allowing this exemption, there's, I mean, there's not that many possibilities for such a small development, so it's not really going to move, move the total much, right? Not, it's not, it's de minimis in terms of meeting the minimum, the target unit types overall for the master plan area.
But if you have multiple small units you're developing together, you would consider them, you'd group them together before you applied the requirements?
So there is incentives that you can't like come, I was like, I'm going to divide it up, and there's language in there that you can't like, if you have 10 acres, you can't say, I'm going to submit 100 different applications, right?
But if I had 3.4 acre lots together, I would apply the, I would apply different rules? I guess it would have to be more than that.
It would be aggregated, correct, because you'd be doing the stage-one master plan area.
The second example is jumping up to a four-acre lot that's developed by itself. You have a total, the total minimum from the table is 35 units. Of that, you're looking at nine units of middle housing, at least three small units, and five full are mobility-ready units, two of which would be full mobility-ready units. And in that, you'd have at least two different number of units, maybe like detached homes and middle housing, for example. The maximum percent that you could dedicate to detached homes, let's say, or middle housing, or one type of middle housing would be 60%. So let's say that four-acre lot has, is a lower net area than you expected. So I took that, you know, it's 60% net area versus 75% of gross. So your reduction ratio, we call it, ends up being .8, which is 60 divided by 75. And so then that takes your minimum units down to 28, reduces your middle housing to an eight units, and three small units, and then takes you down to four mobility-ready units. Still only have two required, and the 60% requirement stays the same. So let's say, this is an example down in South, where there's a lot of these types of kind of four to five-acre lots that are adjacent to each other. So let's take, two of those existing lots are aggregated together, and, but it's still about, only about a quarter of the subdistrict in this case. So you just take the table, add it together, total minimum of units, 62. And those don't, you don't have to do 31 and 31 again on each lot. You could, you know, you could have 60, you could have like 45 on one lot and 15 or 17 on the other. That would be fine, as long as you met the rest of the standards. You have 16 middle housing units, which again aggregated between the two, four small units, and eight mobility-ready units. Again, you're large enough here that you'd require three different unit types. And again, the maximum of any one of those is 60%. One thing I haven't mentioned here that for, and I should have clarified, and I don't know if it's even clear in your packet, is the concept that, you know, it's not token, if you just put one unit type, it doesn't qualify. You need to like have, I think it's, we may need to refine this number, but probably like 5%, it'd need to represent some minimal amount of your total unit types to kind of count as one of your unit type. But generally, I don't think that'll be an issue, because by the time you're using the 60%, meeting that standard, it's, you're going to tend to have it anyway. So we're still looking at whether or not that extra layer to make sure, you know, that kind of minimum threshold to count as a unit type is needed or not. So... Example four is an entire subdistrict that's a part of a large parcel. Again, you're not, even though maybe the stage-one area covers 50 acres, you're doing the analysis only on the 17 and a half acres. So 114 units, 29 middle housing units, eight small units, 15 mobility-ready units, and three unit types, and still the maximum percent of land used for one type is 60%. So it's not in the table, so I wanted to share, this was last-minute math, as while you were electing a chair, so hopefully it's correct. But, so what this looks like overall, kind of what we're aiming for at a minimum for the whole master plan area. So the minimum units is 1,325. We've talked about that quite a bit before. But what minimum you're going to get is just under, at least just under 300 middle housing units, which is substantial. I mean, that is, would add a lot of housing options to the market. 85 small units and 155 mobility-ready units. And honestly, just kind of my gut, I'll say at this point, I mean, this isn't official, I don't, I mean, I can't totally have a crystal ball for the next 20 years, but my feeling is you'll be well in excess of middle housing units and small units, probably pretty close on mobility-ready units. And then, of course, you'll have three unit types. So with that, I will open it up again for any remaining questions and comments. I will, as you see Ms. Dukas handing the yellow card, again, share cards to your discretion, and you can take public comments. And I, as I know Ms. Dukas and Mr. Grunberg have thoughts on this, and we've been in discussion with them, and appreciate, can you appreciate their collaboration as we work through this? But first, happy to answer any of your additional questions. Take your comments.
So what is my Robert's Rules of Order? Do I take questions from this group, and then can I open it to...
Yeah, it's your prerogative. We're not in a public hearing right now, so it's really your prerogative.
Do whatever I want.
Pretty much.
I like that. So, so any questions from Mr. Heverline?
Dan, can you go back to the last slide? So because it's here, I like seeing the number of units. What would be interesting to see is a comparison to the unit types that we have in the city already, to get a sense of scale for how much this would be adding to the overall inventory. So, you know, it would be nice to be able to see, to say, okay, well, we're adding 296 middle housing units, and we only have 30. That's a huge thing. If we had 12,000 middle housing units, it wouldn't be a huge deal. So it'd be nice to see that comparison, maybe for next time, or just a separate sendout, just with that detail, so we could see how that breaks out for each one. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Heverline. I would just mention right now off the bat is, as of the last annual housing report, approximately 10% of the city's housing stock is middle housing. So even us requiring a minimum of 20% will be a substantial difference. But yeah, we can definitely bring those numbers back.
The vast majority of that would be like townhouses, and actually, a lot of it's also like the attached single family, like around the golf course, and Chervino as well would qualify as middle housing technically, so...
And I would note, an interesting statistic for us to bring back to you would be the ADUs, because I think we, I think in working through this code, because of the small unit requirements and the fact that you can put an ADU with the single-family home, and you get that kind of counting of the 50% to both, there's, I think there's a high probability that we will see ADUs built in this area, which we have not seen in other neighborhoods in terms of new development. And only recently, over the last few years, have we started to really see property owners come in and invest in putting ADUs on their property. We still have a relatively, I would say, small supply on that side, and so it'll be interesting to see what happens in Frog Pond East and South related to that.
I definitely think that will move the needle on ADUs.
Please define an ADU.
Accessory dwelling unit, which is, is a unit that doesn't exceed, in most areas of the city, 800 square feet, and in Old Town, 600 square feet of, of habitable area. Sorry, when, back when we were adopting the ADU code, I couldn't pronounce habitable, so it's still an ongoing joke. So, so it's accessory, so it's like, you know, the, the, the building in the back. So it has to be on the site of a, of a primary dwelling and accessory, and less than 800 square feet.
So it's not a garage?
It could be a converted garage.
Could be a converted, okay.
And it also has to have full housekeeping facilities and like a separate entrance. So it could, that could be like above the garage, as long as it has like exterior entrance and full housekeeping facilities. It could be a garage, it could be a separate detached thing in the backyard, it could be the ground floor of like a three-story townhouse, it could be a number of different configurations. The key part is that it's associated with another larger unit, and that it has full housekeeping facilities and like a separate entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Willard?
Can you go to one of your example math slides? Any of them will do. I was puzzled by that last bullet. I've been trying to wrap my brain around it as you've gone through our four examples. Maximum percentage of land used by one unit type, 60%. The reason I'm struggling with this is because wouldn't that vary by urban form? Like some urban forms consume more land than others. So I'm puzzled how we can specify 60%.
Well, I would say, certain unit types consume more land than others, because the urban form can be any unit type.
I'm just thinking of the setbacks, and how, how much land that does or does not.
Yeah, so in each urban, good thought, in each urban form, the setbacks are the same for all the housing types. So the idea is, you're going to have approximate, or roughly, you know, the same ratio of land to structure regardless of unit type.
It's not gonna be 60%. Urban Form 1 would be very much more dense, that number would be lower, I'm trying to make sure I have my math right, versus Urban Form 3, which would have more land.
But you're going to have a variety of unit types in Urban Form 1. So this is based on, so in Urban Form 1, so let's say you have 10 acres in Urban Form 1, no more than 60% of the land could be used for apartments.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or no more than 60% could be used for detached homes.
Okay.
Okay. I, I, I know Director Bejel had me rework this language, and it probably is still not perfect, though.
Yeah, I would just, for the benefit of the full commission, you know, a lot of this really came from that not wanting any one unit type to dominate. And so, yes, that is true, that like in a, you know, different building types are going to consume different amounts of land. But the, the whole purpose is, is regardless of that, is that there's still enough variety that no one housing type is dominating the landscape within that sub-district.
And, and that's also why we didn't base this on number of units, while we did it on land area, because of that different rate at which different unit types consume land. Because otherwise, if you based on unit, conceptually, you could put, you know, apartment building with, you know, 60% of the units, and then take up 80% of land with detached homes.
Okay.
But it's more about taking up no more than 60% of the land regardless of the number of units.
Okay, then with that clarification, the, the language you use elsewhere is net and gross land area, and so here we're just using land.
Yeah, that was just, because I was typing quick.
Okay, but is it, is it gross?
It's net, yes.
It's net, okay.
By definition, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I do, I appreciate the consolidation of just that, the Table 6B, that is really nice, and just referring to like the housing types as they are versus like Type A or B, or whatever it might be. So that's really helpful. And then I just may have missed it, but how did we, how do we determine the number of the full mobility-ready units?
So, thank you, great question. So, so there's the amount of mobility-ready units, which is 10%. So, that, that 10% could be, full mobility has to be a third of that. The other two-thirds can be either-or.
Okay. How did we decide on?
How, how are we defining full?
Yeah.
Mobility-ready versus partial mobility-ready?
Is that, is that the question?
Well, that's a good second question, yeah.
Sure.
Maybe we should talk about that, too, sorry.
But how, so, let me maybe restate the-
How do we get at the number of full, the number of full units being?
33%.
33, yeah, 33%.
A third have to be full?
A third have to be full?
A third of the 10% have to be full?
That was just kind of a, a gut-check type test of what's reasonable for the market, and, you know, because those are, because that means you're either taking up land with, with a single-level unit, or you're adding an ADU, and that that is, I mean, that is pushing the market, so. And, there's been a lot of discussion, it's like, well, I mean, for the most part, a partial can meet a lot of the same purposes as a full, but we still want some full. We don't want to have zero full. So, that is why we did it, you know, fairly small portion of it has to be full, where, you know, the rest of it, you know, we'll get our mobile, our accessible units however we can get them, where someone could live that happened to have limited mobility.
Okay.
So let me ask a different question than the other one. Is, is it clear to a developer the difference between full and partial mobility-ready?
Yes, by definition, I mean essentially, partial means there's stairs to some part of the building. Full, there's not. And I can bring back those definitions, so.
That's fine.
So the definition specifically mentions stairs, and that you need stairs to, to access part of the unit in a partial mobility-ready unit. I almost said friendly. I probably have said friendly at some point in this presentation. Maybe I can re-
Sorry, I'm still, I'm just processing, and then I made a lot of eye contact with people, but I don't have anything to say. I'm just, I'm just processing. It's, and I'm still stuck on just like, yeah, I mean, the number of full units just being a third, because I cannot like gut-check, or like, I don't know, just trying to figure out like what, is that right number? So maybe it is like, just more of that testing, or we'll find out as we kind of move forward, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be 20%, but 20% as we looked at, seemed too small. I mean, because in a lot of these smaller projects, you end up with just one, or, you know. So, 50% seemed too much, 33% was in the middle. I mean, that's kind of, it's kind of the Goldilocks test, yeah. I mean, that's really, that's the science of it at this point, to be forthright about it.
How does it compare to other developments in the area? Is that, is it the same?
We haven't had mobility-friendly requirements. Mobility-ready units. So that is a novel approach. So that's another reason why, you know, we end up having, falling back to like a Goldilocks type test, because we don't have a lot of precedent to go on, to do something more scientific.
I would further note that some of this is, it is different still because of some of the housing, statewide housing policy changes. You know, when we think about master planning and Villebois, and we were being very precise about different housing types in different places, you have the ability to also prescribe things like, we're gonna have X percentage of single-level, single-detached houses, or these types of unit types are gonna be here, and so you know generally how many of each unit type you're gonna get, and who that might serve. So, the paradigm we're in now is being less prescriptive, prescriptive with the specific unit type as it's defined normally, which is, you know, single-family detached, or a type of a middle housing structure, or an ADU, or whatever. And instead, thinking about who are we trying to serve? So regardless of what that unit type looks like at the end of the day, whether it's a larger home that's detached, or whether it's in an elevator-served apartment, or whether it's an ADU, is we're trying to serve certain people in our community, including people who have accessibility and mobility constraints. And so, and that was a clear goal of this commission and the council. And so, that's, this is, these targets come from that, and they are relatively low, because this is new and novel. These are things that we haven't seen a lot of in, like across the state. It hasn't been something that's been state-mandated. It has, there, we're not the only ones having this conversation, we're not the only ones adopting things of this nature. A lot of the language around this that you may see elsewhere is visitability. Did I say that right?
Close enough.
Being visitable?
Yes. Don't ask me to say it.
And that tends to be more of like the partial, what we see as like mobility-ready as opposed to full mobility-ready. And so, our definitions are slightly different, because we did hear a desire to make sure that we have full mobility-ready units, that we have livable facilities where the whole facility is accessible to somebody with mobility constraints. So, this is newer. We don't necessarily, we have other units throughout the city that would meet these definitions, that have been built, but they weren't prescribed in this way in a master plan area before, or in the zoning code before.
Any other looking out there? Who wants to go first?
Well, I would, if I may, prior to that, just I wanted to go back and check kind of how are we feeling about this? Do we, because, so I mean, as we look at our work program over the next few months, I mean, we have some other things to hit on, but still, we're nearing the end. And so I just want to make sure as we go through these things, are we at a level of comfort, where we're ready to package this with a larger package, or do we need to come back and talk about some more detail of it? So I wanted to get kind of the commissioners' feel on that.
And I would just say, Chair Card, it's up to, it's again, your discretion as to whether you want, I think that's a really important question we need answered. If you would like to hear from the members of the audience first, that is also fine. But we do want to make sure we get back to that question.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to hear from members of the audience. Who, Ms. Dukas, you want to go first? All right. State your name, address, you know the drill.
I do know the drill. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of West Hills Development. Welcome to the new commissioners. You have jumped in the middle of a very, very complicated planning process. So thank you for your service in advance. So, just to catch some of you up a little bit, West Hills Development has control over the AZR property. And so that is the property, we're sending around a couple of site plans that show our preliminary concept sketch for the AZR property. It's the largest piece within Frog Pond. It's located at the northeast corner of Stafford Road and Advance. We've been working with staff for, I believe, a couple years now, on what the AZR property can become within the world of Frog Pond East and South. We've worked hard on the variety standards, how the sub-districts are gonna work. There's been a lot of back and forth with staff, trying to test out these provisions. So if staff is doing their ground-truthing, we're also doing ground-truthing, but we're doing it with a real estate lens. So, we think our plan is pretty close, but there's, there's a couple areas. So the two plans in front of you, one is a clean version, that you can see the yellow and orange lots in the middle. It's the 11 by 17 sheet. The important thing to note on this sheet are the red lines that are running north-south along 63rd Avenue and along 60th Avenue. Those are the sub-district boundaries. So Sub-District E4 is the one on the far west, E5 is in the middle, and E6 is on the right. So, we've struggled, I think, the most with the E4 district, which is the one along Stafford Road. Because of the roundabout, the extension of Brisbane, the improvements that need to happen along Stafford Road in, in, along Advance, and the wetlands that are located on the property, there are site planning constraints that limit what kind of development footprint wants to fit on that sub-district. Early on in the conversation, we told everybody, we think apartments are really the best use along this corridor. We got head nods from Planning Commission. I think staff understands where we're coming from, and with good urban design, that was supportable. That sub-district also has the downtown, or not the downtown, the mixed-use district along the Brisbane Street, so you'll see the pink buildings along there. So those are expected to have ground floor, retail is what has been prescribed. We're still struggling with the viability of the ground floor retail, but a ground floor activated space, and then multifamily up above. Those are expected to be elevator-served structures. The ones along Stafford are expected to be walk-ups, garden-style apartments. That sub-district, we think, has come together in a pretty good design, but it's not checking all the boxes of what Mr. Pauli went through tonight. So in terms of variety, we have two housing types there. We have elevator multifamily, and we have walk-up multifamily. So two housing types, I think it covers more than 60% of the net area. I haven't run that calc, but with two housing types, it seems like it's gonna be 50/50 or something close to that. We've looked at site planning concepts to try to find a way to get another housing type in there, but with the parking field, from an urban design standpoint, again, it's very hard to put for-sale homes adjacent to that parking lot. There's a small wetland that needs to be protected. So from a site planning standpoint, it's very, very hard to get a third housing type within that district. The other ironic box that we're having trouble checking is that there's no middle housing in that sub-district. It's very much the most affordable housing district with the multifamily, so I think we're achieving what middle housing's trying to get to, but in terms of the, the strict definition of middle housing, we're not checking that box. So, I think there needs to be some special provisions for Sub-District E4. We understand that you don't necessarily want to open up special standards across the entire planning district, but we think specifically to subsection E4, it needs some extra allowance. The smaller exhibit that I sent you, the eight and a half by 11, is the same site plan, but it's overlaid with the urban form color mapping. So the brown color in the middle, that's the Urban Form 1, the orange is Urban Form 2, and the yellow is Urban Form 3. So, just to help you get oriented with the Frog Pond nomenclature, how it relates to this site plan. So our primary concerns with the variety standards are really focused on E4. We think we've, we've gotten there on everything else, or at least close enough that we can finish it up. The other thing that was discussed tonight is about the mobility standards. Staff is correct, you all are kind of pushing the envelope on the mobility concept. There's several jurisdictions that have the visitability standards, and I would encourage you to talk about it from a policy standpoint of, do you need full mobility-friendly, where you've got a sleeping space on the ground floor? Or is it important that those are accessible units for people to visit? And that there are an inviting home, an accessible home, that nobody feels left out from those homes? So that's where the visitability standard came from, and so that's where, you've got a bathroom on the main floor, you've got the minimal steps into the entry, if any, and you've got the kitchen on the ground floor. Trying to get a bedroom on the ground floor changes the programming, and Dan can talk about this in more detail as a home builder. about this in more detail as a home builder. But what is the public policy desire for that extra bedroom on the ground floor beyond trying to have a fully accessible unit? If you want a fully accessible unit, that's the single-story living. So your full mobility is what you're requiring for that, but when you're talking about mobility-friendly, I'm not sure that you're getting a lot of public value between that sleeping space on the ground floor versus the visitability standard that most other jurisdictions are using. So, that's what I have for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, good luck catching up on everything. It's a lot. I've been a planning commissioner, I understand it. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, other than that, we'll turn it over to Dan Grimberg.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner.
In Sub District E4, on your diagrams, I've never noticed this when you handed it out before, but I'm sure it was there, I just never noticed it. What's up with the excluded white and gray-zoned area?
It's not our property. It's a different parcel. So, that is a good point. We do not know what the wetland boundary is on that other piece of property. There's also a radio tower on it. But we have shattered it in, assuming that it would follow the pattern of Sub District E5. So for the variety standards across the entire sub-district of E4, we believe you would probably get some version of variety with that addition, but that's not the way the table is set up. The table says, E4 West Hills parcel needs to achieve these things, and then this other parcel needs to achieve its own metrics.
Staff comments on that?
These are all things that we've discussed and are continuing to work through, and we have some comments that haven't, some concepts of potential solutions for E4 that we're still working through but haven't been prepared. So that's certainly something we will bring back, once we've, we find those a bit more. We acknowledge the challenges that they're looking at.
Is it possible to combine E4, 5, and 6 together when, and apply the minimum, the standards that way? Or is that because they're different sub-districts?
It's the different subjects, and it gets back to that, having the variety, the, kind of, finer variety. I mean, I won't go into, kind of, the options, because I don't think they're ripe for discussion here quite yet, but we're, we're committed to working with West Hills to find a solution here.
I will point out, Dan put up those numbers on the screen and said that across the entire district, there's a minimum density expected of 1,325 units. If you look closely at our plan, I know the print's very small, but we are planning 400, or 743 dwelling units. That's more than half. So, this property is pretty significant in terms of the overall planning for Frog Pond East and South. We're exceeding the minimums. We're fairly aggressive on the multifamily that's being proposed. We think that's a public good. We think there's a good market for it. We think it's a good urban design along Stafford. But I think it is worth a point of perspective that we would be providing more than half the dwelling units for Frog Pond East and South from a, from a minimum planning standpoint. We would also be providing 143 middle housing units, which is, again, almost half of your planned 296.
Commissioner Herline.
Yeah, Mimi, question for you regarding the parking in District E4. How much of that parking is required based on the premise of a mixed-use building, specifically around the commercial side of it?
I don't know that we've seen the parking standards. We have shown parking ratios over on the right-hand, on the left-hand side. So we're less than a 2 to 1 parking ratio. So it's, it's somewhat underparked, and we're concerned it's underparked. But we are a little too early to, to spend a lot of time counting parking stalls. We think we're close enough that we can continue to work through it, but we are concerned about the amount of parking, particularly south of Brisbane. That is so tight in there that, particularly for the mixed-use buildings, the parking for those will probably be on the north side of Brisbane, and then they're going to have to get across the street.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, Dan, what I was, what I was thinking through on this is, you know, going around this concept of, okay, E4, we had a plan, and it was, you know, based on a minimum number of units, and, and the fact that West Hills doesn't have all of E4, I don't, you know, given that we are mandating the mixed-use building, and we're, we're, kind of, forcing a unit type that is taking away from the ability to potentially do other unit types, maybe it is something to look at from a staff perspective to see how we can mitigate that.
Yeah, certainly thinking about the, the Brisbane Main Street as a, as a unique type that does serve a lot of, I mean, you have single-level, small units, the elevator-served, there are, there are probably be some of the most mobility-ready units in the development. It's something that we're aware of and are considering as, to work this out, as well as, so, yeah.
And the feedback loop that we have with staff doesn't always jive with how we're doing feedback loop with Planning Commission. So we'll, we'll discuss things, and staff is still working on it, and then they discuss the same things with you all. So we're, we sort of stumble over each other a little bit, so we're still working through it.
Anybody else? Comments?
Do we want to discuss?
Yes.
Do we want to discuss the, the true desire between mobility, visible? Because the visitable as defined means that you have to have a sleeping quarters on the ground, on the ground floor with minimal stairs. And that's very difficult, it sounds like, to achieve.
That's the mobility-friendly. Visitable is minimal steps, restroom.
Okay, so it's a partial mobility, mobile-ready?
Yeah, it's, it's visitability, mobility-friendly, and then full mobility.
Okay. So do we need to discuss that?
I'd encourage you to hear from Dan before you dive into that conversation, since he's an actual home builder.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Ms. Dukas? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would say, as you discuss the item, whether it's later this evening or another meeting, is, let us know any questions you have that would help you have that conversation in the future. So if you want to start it here, and it makes you think of additional questions you might have about both visitable standards, as well as what we're proposing, let us know your questions, and we can bring more information back for you and for your consideration on this topic.
We're happy to continue that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Grimberg?
Good evening, and congratulations, Chairman Carr, and new Planning Commission members. So...
Dan, would you mind picking up the mic a bit? Your, yeah, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Dan Grimberg, West Hills Land Development. We are a locally-owned developer builder. We've built the first 350 homes in Bilbois. We've been building in Wilsonville for the last 25 years. So we are very much committed to Wilsonville. We've done about five different developments in Frog Pond West, and so we are definitely interested in Wilsonville, and we want to see Frog Pond East and South be successful as well. This is by far the most difficult planning development project that we've ever encountered, quite frankly. Dan said that it was, what'd you say, novel, and something like, novel. It is novel. And so, we've been pushed, the plan that you see there is Plan Number 36. We do a lot of, you know, iterations of plans, and what about this, and what about that, but 36 is like off the charts, okay? So we're trying to make it work. We think we're close, but then it gets down to some of the details. And so you're mentioning, so, the single-family, if it's detached, you're limited to 60% of the unit type, right? And so, the way we look at it as a developer, there's different sizes of single-family lots, as an example. In, in this case, the plan you have in front of you, we have 32-foot-wide lots, we have 38-foot-wide lots, and then we have townhomes, we have duplexes, alley-loaded duplexes, we have a lot of different units going on in there, right? And each one of them is very unique, and it's a different product. All the single-family is not the same. I mean, for this chart, it is, but not in the market, it's not. A 32-foot-wide house is a different floor plan, it's a different price point, it's a different buyer. 38-foot-wide is a little bit larger home, accommodates more of a family buyer. So, you know, again, I just, I say that because we're trying to make this work, and we can make the plan in front of you work, but when we get pushed on some of the details, like the mobility-friendly units, that you have to have a bedroom on the main floor, the unit, the, the lot is 32 feet wide. There's a very limited footprint that you have to work with, and to try to put a kitchen, a living room, a full bathroom, and a bedroom on a main floor of a small unit, we can do it, but is it a good floor plan? Is it a good unit? No. I go to our design department, and I say, can we do this? And they sketch it out, and they go, yeah, but we don't want to do it. If we, if we want to, we would be very willing to make it available as an option if somebody wants to basically do a pre-sale. We can do it if they're willing to accept the shortcomings of that type of a plan, because you've got to take something, and there's, there's only so many square feet on the main floor. So where are you going to put it? And if you're taking up a bedroom, that's got to be at least 10 by 10, 10 by 12, that's a big chunk of square footage, and so we are very concerned about that. And this is a very complicated plan, but you're trying to, Wilsonville in this area is primarily a single-family neighborhood, right? That's what, I don't know where everybody lives, but I would guess a good portion of all of you live in single-family detached homes. Okay, that, when people think about moving to Wilsonville, that's what they're thinking. We are limited in this plan to a certain number of single-family, because, and they're all treated the same. So we're doing a lot of townhomes, we're doing a lot of apartments, we're doing a lot of different things to try to make it work, but the real strong market, and what the original intention of Frog Pond East and South was, to do affordable housing. By making smaller units and different types doesn't make, necessarily make it more affordable. I'll just give you some issues that we're dealing with, in addition to some of the plan requirements. There is a stormwater master plan that's being drafted right now and reviewed, and if, if that code were adopted as it is, there would be a 15% loss of density of the plan that's in front of you. Okay? That affects, obviously, the cost of housing, the number of units, the minimum number of units by unit type, and so that has not been resolved. We just had a meeting on Tuesday, and our consultants were there and explaining the issues, and I don't know which way that's going to go. So when I see table, I think it was 6B that has minimums of certain unit types, I'm concerned, because is that based upon the stormwater code as it exists today? Or is that based upon the new stormwater code that is being reviewed and not yet adopted? I would say it's probably on the existing stormwater code, which, if there's a revision to that, it's going to increase the cost of housing significantly. It may not make these projects feasible, and I'm very concerned about it, and we won't be able to hit the minimum. So, I'm kind of rambling on, I'm just trying to tell you, we're not there yet. We have a great relationship with your staff. They're very professional. We've had some rough spots, because they're, these are tough issues, but we've also had a lot of good conversations. And we want to make this successful, but it's not ready to be, when I see that these minimums are being presented to you, and then the next question is, are you kind of all feeling okay about it? I'm really concerned, because it's not proven. What's proven is, we can do the plan that's in front of you. Beyond that, I don't know, and I think it's probably doubtful. So, thank you for your time.
I'd like to ask you a question, Dan.
Mr. Willard, go ahead.
In general, how do you, as a developer, feel about seeking a waiver? Because just because we can't write in everything into the code doesn't mean you can't seek an exception. And so in general, are you opposed to seeking exceptions or waivers? Is that, is that problematic for your business?
It's better than not having that ability, but we don't, as, in general, generally, that's nice to have, but you'd rather have a code that was workable so you know what you've got. I mean, we're, you know, we've been working on this two years, and we've got a lot of time, energy, money invested in this, and we still don't know what we can do with that property. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's level, it's got good access, and we're sitting here thinking, what can we do? That's not normal. Normally, based upon the code, you can go in and you know what type of a community you can develop. And I would say that normally, we want to create the very best community, neighborhood housing, and there is a market, we, you know, none of the discussion really is about the market, it's like, we want to create variety, which I understand, but variety is just one element. There is a market that we're building to. So there has, you know, whatever we build has to sell, or it's not going to happen. I mean, we're all in this together, and we've talked about this even this week. I mean, we all want to produce great housing and a great community for Wilsonville, but it's got to be real code to allow a real neighborhood develop. We can't just go in checking boxes. That doesn't provide good housing. That's what we need to, our, the reason we're successful is we produce great neighborhoods and great housing. We're not, we're not restricted by all this code. I mean, that sounds weird, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we produce to a market, and the, and the buyer, everybody here buys a house, right? You've got choices. What price, what are the features, what are the size, whatever. And it's not based upon all, a lot of these items that we're being restricted by.
But a lot of building to the market has led to the housing crisis we have a little bit, too, though. So we have to, have to take that into consideration as good stewards of our community.
Yes. But, okay, I will, I do need to address some, so the, I don't, I think a lot of things, so if I've already said this, just cut me off, but when we had a meeting earlier this week, they was giving an example of a single-family home in Wilsonville. A permit was taken out in December of '23. The SDCs and building permit fees for one single-family home was a, would be, was 93,000. And with the new park increase, and the new increase in the supplemental fee for Frog Pond West would be 108,000 for a single-family home. So, you know, the discussion has been, how do we produce affordable housing? $108,000 for permit fees and SDCs is not how you get to affordable housing. So, you know, to do, to be restricted by some of these factors, and then have to put $108,000 on a restricted-size unit, it's not going to be marketable. It's just not. So we can, you know, you can try to force certain things, but the financial reality is, it's, it's virtually impossible. And we're not doing that, and I'm not complaining about it, I'm just saying there are certain factors that we don't control that impact our ability to hit these goals.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing the reality into the conversation, so, but...
Yeah. If we could sell, the lower the price we can sell a house for, the better for us. I mean, we're all in this, I mean, you're happier because more people can afford it, it's easier to sell, we're serving a public need, that's great, but there is the reality. So, that's kind of where we are.
Commissioner Herline.
So, going back to the concern around mobility-ready units, do you expect the ADUs in District E5 and E6 to... in District E5 and E6 to meet the mobility-ready requirements?
Yes, because they'll be on one floor.
Okay. So, so by looking at that and looking at the numbers that you have, you would meet the three percent requirement for mobility-ready units in both of those sub-districts?
I don't believe that's, I don't think so.
Yeah, you would.
You would?
Yeah.
I did the math.
It's in, it's in four that we.
That's a challenge.
The fully, the fully mobile, fully accessible, we meet.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. We meet because, but the problem is, with the partial mobility, accessible, whatever, the, the problem is, on a two-story unit, trying to get a bedroom on the main floor. That is really tough.
Dan, is bedroom required for a partial?
Yes.
For a partial, the idea is you could fully live on one floor, and you just may have like spare bedrooms and such upstairs.
Okay.
As currently drafted, yes.
Which is a problem for us.
It looks like, as, as it's currently drafted in the report, that the, the full mobility-ready is, is one-third, thirty-three percent of the mobility-ready units.
About three-point-three percent, yeah, of the overall units.
Is that a minimum? It doesn't state in my report that I'm looking at. It just says thirty-three percent.
Right, it's a minimum, so the.
They can all be.
The, the full ten percent of the mobility-ready units could be full mobility-ready units of a developer so chose.
Okay. That's, I think we just need to make sure that's clear, but.
And the number of ADUs, in our case, in this plan, is limited because what we're doing is, it's an end unit of a townhome, so it has accessibility from the side. That's how we're able to get there. And again, we're being pushed to do it. But we have done some of that in inner Portland, and they have been successful. But it just, it is limited because there's only so many end units of townhomes in our plan.
And the plan, like, for example, E4 is no problem, because you have one-hundred-and-twenty-five elevator-serve departments, which all meet it, right?
Yes.
So, it's where you, really, where there's no multifamily, and you're relying on like ADUs or cottages to meet it, where it, it's more difficult to meet.
So, on, so in District E5.
Yes.
For the single-family detached rear-load, do you expect to have any master or primary on mains in that product type?
We, in that situation, we don't want to have a requirement for a certain number. What we would do is, we would offer it as an option. So if you come in and you say, I have to have a master on the, or a bedroom on the main floor, we could have a plan for that. But to be required, I think in one of the sub-districts, it was like twenty-seven. And that's a, that's a lot of units for a housing type that should be the kind of the meat and potatoes of that development. And instead, it's being restricted to, in our opinion, a substandard design to check the boxes to get the bedroom on the main floor. And it doesn't, you know, the, the other thing is, we go through all that, it decreases the value of the lot, the house, the everything, that affects the feasibility of even the development that would have ever happened. It's like, will a person that has accessible, accessibility issues even end up in that home? I don't know. I don't know. Maybe someday. That's not part of what's, I mean, it's just that it's supposed to be built. So, I mean, if it's built too for a customer, I think that would solve, that, that meets the need for that customer. And then we're producing it for that person, not building it for some, you know, kind of obscure hope that somebody's going to end up in that type of a home. I just, doesn't make sense to me.
So, if we took these, and, okay, I'm speaking out of turn, right? If we took these three sub-districts together, would it meet, and treated them as one, would they meet, would this design meet the minimums?
Yes. Yes, because of the multifamily.
Mimi, you need to be on a microphone, if you're going to speak. Sorry. And then I also would just, as you all think about your questions for our visitors, I guess that's the right word, members of the public, and staff, is I just want to do a time check for you all, so that we have time for the rest of the discussion.
Yes, we would be able to meet that. The multifamily, as staff pointed out, all those units are, are mobility, full mobility, trying to get my terminology right. So our numbers would be fine across the entire master plan. But, you know, if, if we're struggling with this visibility versus mobility-friendly, it's, it's still a market issue. If we solve it for West Hills, that's great. That's, that's my client, that's what I'm here to advocate for. But there's still the market reality of, that's a tricky design to put forward. And is there a public policy, is it good public policy to require a bedroom on the main floor of that percentage of homes?
So, I guess the question that I would have, though, is, in E5 specifically, at two-hundred-and-twelve units, that means you need fourteen mobility-ready, partial mobility-ready units. Seven percent, six-point-six percent. So you need fourteen units. So in the hundred-and-four detached homes.
I don't think that matters.
Ten percent total.
Ten percent total.
And the ADUs count is the other one. So the ADUs cover some of it already. So.
So I would note that the math, we no longer do ten percent of what is being proposed. Because if, for some reason, the site plan changed slightly, then we have to do all the map, math all over. So the ten percent is based on that initial calculation and is presented in Table 6B. So I believe, actually, the numbers for E5 are twenty-seven and nine, if I looked at the table right. Maybe Mr. Polly can confirm for me.
For E5?
For E5.
Wow.
Okay, so then.
Twenty-seven and nine, yes.
Okay, so then twenty-seven out of the hundred-and-four detached units would have to have a bedroom on the main floor.
Not necessarily, because, so you subtract the ADUs out of that twenty-seven.
Oh, so there's twelve ADUs, so then you're down to fifteen. So fifteen out of a hundred-and-four, so somewhere around twelve percent, fifteen percent. Is that a reasonable number from a development perspective to have a bedroom on the first floor?
And that's where we're struggling with, which, which floor plans are substandard because of that requirement?
Well, it's only substandard at the lot size that you've blighted out. Like District E6, you're doubling the amount of units that is required by minimum in, in 6B.
But if we build bigger homes to get that floor plan to work for that bedroom on the main floor, then you increase the, the cost of the home, and your affordability goes down. And it's, yeah, it's, it's pushing and pulling all those levers, and it's, it's very hard to hit it all.
So is your contention that the ten percent is a high number?
It's my contention that, and this is my personal feeling, is that visibility is a better policy objective than the partial mobility. A full mobility, I understand, there's single-level living options within the plan. But getting that extra bedroom on the main floor, there's a lot of people who don't want a bedroom on the main floor. They're not going to use that bedroom. You know, as, as, as a, if I was a single woman living in a house, I don't know that I'd want a bedroom on the main floor. I think I'd want to be on the second floor. There's just some, some practicality of, you know, not everybody wants a bedroom on the main floor. And when you're dealing with these tight homes, the site plan implications, the, the floor plan implications are real. And we don't get to build big homes very much anymore. Nobody can afford them. It's, it's just not the way development's working now.
And, Sheriff, if I may?
Yes.
So the original thought was that this would be, all of these would be like essentially single-story requirements. But then it morphed into like, okay, we can be flexible if, you know, to allow it to also be essentially the single, the single-level unit that if you want to put spare bedrooms upstairs or something, then, yeah, that seems to meet it. But really, the goal of this requirement started out with that single, that notion of single-level living.
And that was to get at the council and the planning commission's goals for meeting needs of people in our community that have limited mobility.
And it's a policy choice. I mean, there's trade-offs. And that's why you, as a body, gets to, gets to chew on it.
Do we know what the need, it's hard to know need, right? Do we know the need of the community for this?
So, we, we will be producing that information in the new housing needs and capacity analysis. We'll be, I think, I actually can't remember which rules we fall under, but I think we'll be attempting to at least provide that information in terms of the varying needs within our community, and how that might filter into housing types that are needed, as well as housing sizes, which, more about affordability than size, but that is obviously inextricably linked. But we will be looking at some of that in our next housing needs and capacity analysis. We don't know that right now. What I can say, just from like a regional state level, is that we know we have a shortage of accessible unit types. There are many people who seek to find accessible unit types and have a difficult time finding that. As Mr. Grinberg pointed out, we can't guarantee that the people who need this single living are going to be the ones who actually buy it. However, it's just like the housing conundrum as a whole, is that people often buy under their maximum limit, right? If you can find the house that you want for cheaper than you can even technically afford by the federal definition, you're going to. Why pay more for housing if you don't need to? And so there is inevitably sort of this, not everybody's kind of falling into the housing category bucket of, from a price standpoint either. However, the more housing units you provide, and the more housing units you provide at the various price points for the community, and in this case, the more housing units that have an accessible component to them, provides more on the market to hopefully meet the demand that's out there.
Right. But we're now taking that policy and shrinking it to a plot of land. Whereas we've got a single development that, across three different subdivisions, equals what we're looking for, why can't we apply that across those three subdivisions? Because it's one.
So that, we have not made a decision, we haven't adopted anything, right?
Sure.
So this is all fluid conversation. I would say that the reason why it has not been proposed that way is because we have heard from the commission, the desire for variety throughout the full neighborhood. Originally, we discussed block-level variety, and for a number of reasons, we realized why that would be completely impossible. But that notion for that gets then built into the sub-district level. And why we've based all of the numbers on the sub-district level is so that we don't just have all of the accessible units in one corner, all of the multifamily in one corner, all the single-family in one corner, and all the middle housing in the fourth corner. So the desire was for a mixing. There are different ways we can calculate that. So right now, the, we've evolved it to this table that Dan has put in front of you. And we have decided, at this point, what's been proposed is for every single one of those minimum components, minimum percentages, to be at the sub-district level. So there is a policy discussion that the planning commission can have. If you desire certain ones of those to apply at the sub-district level, others to apply at a more aggregated level, some, like, ability for us to be flexible and blend on certain minimum requirements. That's really a part of your discussion here tonight, is for us to feel your pulse of where you're at right now. Even if you were to say, and this is probably especially important for some of our newer commissioners, even if tonight you say, yeah, we're feeling comfortable with that, this will, or we would like to say, these few things changed, or we have these questions that we want you to come back with answers for, so we can actually give you a better opinion. Even if you give us kind of a general pulse, like, you're going to see this draft in front of you again with some of the other standards. So even if you give us some of that direction, and then we still need to make some tweaks later, that is also fine. Like, that is the process that we're in.
And I just want to add in, I know that you all are looking at this map. This is not reflective of Frog Pond East and South. So do remember that what you're talking about when you talk about development code is you are talking about what applies to all of Frog Pond East and South. And not, this is, I think, the largest parcel.
Correct.
Of, of the entire area.
And in upcoming work session, we will have what's been produced by a consultant we've been working with that covers most of the entire area, and a layout that meets, that follows the code standards. But we appreciate what West Hills and AKS has done to help us guide these, so.
What I'm concerned about is the timing that we're going to get the annual housing report will be later in Q1. It'll be March, right?
Yeah, we always aim for March. Sometimes it's April.
We're scheduled to have the hearing on this code in April. So they don't intercept. So what could, maybe we could go back and look at last year's. But what I remember about last year's and the year prior is price, 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 price.
Correct.
People are really overspending on housing in Wilsonville.
Correct. And last year was the first year that we became a severely cost-burned, burdened city. We joined our neighbors in that status, which, you know, I don't think any of us really enjoy. And so that is definitely a part of the conversation. We can, we could easily, one of the things that's difficult is, as you know, it's such a polished and beautiful report with a lot of graphics and photographs, and we try to get photos on sunny days, and all those things are challenging right now. So one of the things that we could do, though, is come back and provide, I could invite Sarah Pearlman, our assistant planner, to come in advance and talk about the statistics. Because we often have, like, we have already actually polled the statistics for last year on the number of permits polled. And so it's, you know, we, it's an evolution between that, and then looking at costs, and then looking at entitlements to understand the full picture and tell the story. All of that takes a lot of the work. But if part of what the commission would like to see early on is just some of that data, we could come to you in probably February or March with the data, and then come with the full polished housing, annual housing report later.
Yeah, I like, I like the data ahead, because that'll help us analyze, especially the mobility items.
I would say that what we're likely to see is probably a similar picture to last year, given that we didn't see much of a drop in interest rates until late in the last year. And actually, I think they went up at the beginning of twenty-three, so.
Commissioner Higginson.
Yeah, one, one last question for, for West Hills. From a product perspective on those detached, or I guess on any of the units, would you see offices being in any of those downstairs products? But not a closet?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah. So for, for the products that you have in, in District E5, do you see any rooms downstairs that are offices but are not considered bedrooms?
I don't know. I'd possibly. I, I mean, yeah, I'm not.
You just got to have a closet to be a bedroom.
Right. And, and so if we're talking about a scenario where someone needs to live downstairs, and there's a room available, it's not going to matter if there's a closet or not. They're still going to use, they'll, they'll convert an office into a bedroom and put a hutch for clothes. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that we can utilize the creativity that the people in the houses are going to use to the benefit for the development and for the code, and being able to say, hey, we're recognizing that, that this could be used as needed to support somebody who needs that mobility assistance. Without backing us away from and going towards visibility, because I think it's important for us to keep the mobility side of it. Because our goal is to have products in Wilsonville that can be lived in, not just that can be visited. And so I think we should try to figure out, because I guess my personal opinion, this product looks, this proposal looks good, and it looks like it's pretty close to being able to meet things. And, and if we can be creative with. And, and if we can be creative with us giving a little more flexibility, maybe we can make it easier to get there and, and have it be viable.
So maybe what I'm hearing you is, maybe if the developer said, you know, "We're not going to build the bedroom, but this is where we could put it if someone wanted to, you know, hire a contractor to put up..."
Or if...
"...dividing walls for an additional room downstairs."
Or if there's an office, if you have a, a separate room downstairs that could facilitate a living, a sleeping space, and there's a bathroom, then maybe that covers the requirements for the partial...
Yeah, because I think the, the idea is ready. We don't expect it to be fully like built out and everything at this point, but to have the option to do it.
But putting that as a clear and objective standard is not likely. And what you're talking about is the type of dialogue that would happen during the waiver process, which exists.
Well, but you could state that, that it had, it could be a enclosed room suitable for bed, but not the definition of includes a closet, because it has to include a closet to be a bedroom.
I can see planners right now rolling their eyes at that idea.
That's okay, I'm okay with eye-rolling if it generates the conversation to maybe figure out how we can make it work.
Well, for me, price, price, price is my North Star. I think affordability is my North Star personally, so we all need to probably weigh in eventually on, subsess to that, but...
But they're saying that, that requiring these units is going to make it more difficult to maintain price points. Because you're building, by requiring it, you're building an untenable house, right? You're building a house that's not going to work in the space that it's been given.
Yeah, and I think...
It's not going to be sellable.
I fear what you're proposing is introducing a new type, which would be like a conversion-friendly, and that just overcomplicates things.
Mobility almost ready.
Yeah, ready-ish.
Ready-ish. I mean, overall, I'm, I'm agreeing with what's been said. My concern is the fact that is it buildable? Is it, is it, because we have to consider developers and if, can it, can it be built based on the requirements they're putting forth? I like having the minimums, I like addressing the mobility, the middle unit, middle housing. I, I like the discussion around that. I'm just struggling with, can, can, and, and this is just one example, one development. It's like, okay, now when we take the rest of, of the development, will we run into other sub-districts that are going to struggle with the same type of requirements? And so are we making the requirements too stringent for anybody to build anything? That's, that's my concern.
Well, let's be clear, they could build it. They can build anything. In Sub-District E6, they're building almost double the number of units as required by code. So they're denspacking it more than the code requires, the standards require, so they could build it. It's just, do, are we going to, in doing so, it will change the price point. And so are we okay with that?
Well, again, yeah, we've got conflicting, because affordability is a key.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as soon as you start making bigger lots and less units, now the price points go up, but...
Yeah.
I have a question. Within the code, could there be an option? And if you build a standard configuration, and if I'm understanding correctly, if you have the, if you have 15 ADUs, and, you know, whoever's first come, first served is going to buy it, and, and they might even, not even use it as a, an ADU-type unit, but could there be an option there to say, if three out of 15 buy it, then we have this option to build it in this configuration? And I think that would help kind of fit into the code, but also help on the cost side, too. It, it, it puts a little flexibility into the code.
I, I like the idea of the option, of a builder offering it. The, the challenge is, we're talking about a, a housing development that's going to be built over many, many years, right? And so it, it's hard to offer that as an option and the option is, meets our requirement that we've specified in code. That's, you know, because we don't, the, the current people that buy these units, if they have the option, that, that house then has limited resale potentially capability because the next person coming in says, "Oh, I don't want a bedroom on the ground floor." Well, then that house isn't...
It's, it's probably a very low percentage that actually pre-purchase, which is what we'd be talking about.
Exactly, yes.
These are all speculatively built.
Yeah. And having, having a development where I have to pre-sell a bunch of houses to meet a minimum of my whole development doesn't seem reasonable or practical.
Yeah.
So Chair Carr, might I suggest that we ask staff to maybe do a little more thinking on the mobility-ready units and how we get there?
Yes.
Can I add to that, maybe just to ask, could we have just a layout of like the terminology and the definitions for each one, just like side by side, just so we can make sure we get it right? And understand what, yeah.
And is, is there any other information that would be helpful for us to bring forward to you in addition to that, to help you mull this over?
I think the, I think the housing, the, the study that you're talking about, how many, in our current market, how many mobile, whatever, are needed? What's the, what's the market currently for that?
Well, we'll not have those statistics in time.
We won't, okay, right.
No.
I don't think it's, see, even by the time we need to have this...
Do we have it from last year?
We haven't done those numbers prior, so this is probably later next, this year, like late this year, maybe early next year, that, because that's a more full, like, you know, market study by the consultant that...
The best we could probably do is reach out to some of our partner organizations and find out if they have like either county-based or regional-based numbers that we could share with you in terms of need and supply. But it's most likely not going to be specific to Wilsonville. But it might give you just a sense of like the regional or state gaps. But I know a lot of that information right now is still being improved upon as we work towards these housing, the housing dashboard that will be created as a result of this last year's legislation. The state will be creating a dashboard in the future that will highlight what our housing supply is at a state and city level, and that will be addressed at different affordability price points, as well as accessibility needs.
Any, any other comments? Mr. Heberlin?
I think the code's on the right track. I, I mean, I think, you know, that was one of the fundamental questions, Mr. Polly, that you had. I, I think it's really close. I think seeing the, the consultant diagrams of potential developments will help kind of solidify that in my mind, because we're getting great examples from, from AKS and West Hills, and that's fantastic, and, and I want to thank you guys again for that. It would be nice to be able to see some of those other options, some of those other scenarios, so that we can truth-test the code a little bit more in other areas.
Yeah, I should have those, the consultant told me today, I should have them Friday, so should be able to bring them for that great session.
Very good. Okay, anything, any other, okay? Next agenda item, then did you have anything, Miranda, other than just the informational stuff? City, any questions about city council action minutes or any input on that? How about the, the work, work program? That's just the agenda for the rest of the year, right?
Yeah, we try to lay that out, and as you know, it's not a perfect science and we never know what exactly is going to happen on a project, so it's quite possible those dates will change, but we do our best to forecast the year for you and let you know what's coming. Any questions on anything that's on there that maybe you were not aware of or is new?
Did you have any other, you had a comment at one point, did you want to add anything else?
No, I don't think so.
All right. Do we want to adjourn the meeting then, finally?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourned.